...your house or in a school environment with the air conditioning system. But we have oxygen tanks that are on the outside of the International Space Station that can feed oxygen in so that we can breathe. And then the systems inside here just make sure that the percentage levels of oxygen and nitrogen and other things are exactly correct so that we can just cruise around here without a spacesuit on while we're inside the space station and breathe normally.
Hello, my name is Mathis. This is my sign name. I am from MSD, the Maryland School for the Deaf. I have a question for you. I am curious, can astronauts who travel to space play Roblox online with me?
Hello, I'm Marsha Herbert, President of the Board of Education. I would like to welcome you to the May 24, 2021 Special Board Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on the CCPS website at www.kerrolk12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Board members and most staff are present in the boardroom. Some staff may be participating virtually. We have one item on the agenda this evening. There will be no citizen participation scheduled for this meeting. I would remind all of us to silence our cellphones and other devices around us that the microphone may pick up. Also, we should each silence our microphones when we are not speaking. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I need a motion for the approval of the agenda. So moved by Donna Savigny and seconded by Dr. Dorsey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Dr. Locker.
Hey, Board members, good evening. This item was tabled from our regular meeting last Wednesday. Is that correct? Last Wednesday?
Yes.
Right. In the meantime, we're certainly appreciative of the additional one-time funding from our Board of County Commissioners to be used toward compensation of our employees. But this evening, we are going to be approving our FY22 operating food service, debt service, and capital improvement budgets. Mr. Hartlove is going to provide a brief overview of that, and we certainly want to be able to ask questions and make any comments as appropriate. The operating fund budget reflects adjustments for final revenue figures from the state and the county, as well as proportionate matching changes in expenditures. So again, the big one being the operating fund budget, but also food service fund, debt service fund, and capital improvement fund budgets will be discussed and approved this evening. Mr. Hartlove?
Good evening, Board members, and we'll jump right into the presentation. It's not advancing for some reason. Oh, I can't. I'm sorry. Can you advance it for me, Bob? I'm so sorry. Okay. So where, how we're going to handle tonight is, the presentation is based on the May 5 work session. We went through the budget in quite a bit of detail on May 5, and we're just going to provide some updates to what's happened since then, which will tie to the category totals that hopefully we'll approve at the end of the meeting. Next slide, please. So the most important revenue source that we have is the county, the revenue that we get from the county government and the adopted budget, the county adopts their budget tomorrow. It will reflect an ongoing revenue amount of $204,617,860. That's a 6.2 million or 3.13% increase. That does not include, in the final totals, you'll see an additional $1 million in there. That was given to us recently by the Commissioners. We're very happy about that. It's an additional $1 million in one-time funds to go toward one-time compensation efforts at our schools, and as you'll see, it is matched with dollars out of our fund balance. Next slide, please, Bob. So one of the things I want to talk about and go to the second, the second bullet there, this slide, there's no budgetary impact to these conversions. But what we've been doing with, in particularly in the special education area, is we tend to have trouble finding folks to take some of our positions. They are able to get positions with contractors and get paid higher amounts. We have been trying to get those folks on board with us because they're preferable to the contracted services folks that we receive. That's what we're doing here. We're converting some contracted services dollars into dollars for FTE positions. There's no budgetary impact. In fact, if anything, it would, it will be a savings. We can't quantify the savings at this point because we don't have the, we haven't actually hired the people. We don't hire them until we get the approval from you folks to hire them. But basically, we're taking folks who are working for a contracted services service now, and instead of filling those needs through that contracted service, we're going to be fulfilling that need, those needs through FTE position. Questions?
Dr. Locker.
I want to speak for Mr. Shockney, but I know the, in addition to the potential savings that you referenced, there's some value add there in that when folks aren't necessarily contracted from the outside, and that can change a lot, we have, they become our folks and for consistency and professional development and just being a part of a school community, it has lots of advantages there. So I'm happy that we're able to do that. And as Chris said, sometimes these are hard to fill, hard to find folks.
Ms. Savigny.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that, just wanted to reiterate that, you know, we had seen all of those and discussed those as part of the Special Education Staffing Plan at last month's meeting. So, you know, we're very aware of those and that these are not additional FTE positions.
Yeah, thank you for reminding. I should have said that in my, in my comments. I don't know if, Nick, if you have anything or you're just...
No, just to, just to echo Dr. Locker's comments, just the quality of service that we get from staff that is our own, obviously, there's tremendous benefit in the consistency. And then I think there's a little different investment when you're a CCPS employee working with CCPS students that we have found beneficial over time.
All right, next slide. So you'll see in the slides, the next few slides, some of the words are italicized. That notes the change from the May 5 work session. So you see here, the change is the one-time stipends, other payments to employees, and the match of the county funds. These are all, I should have said at the beginning, these are our use of our fund balance. As you can see, we're putting in, we're utilizing $6.8 million of our fund balance. Part of that is to match the $1 million from the Commissioners. The other is to pay for the various stipends that we've paid out and will be paying in the upcoming fiscal year. The bullet at the bottom was there at the last meeting. It is just a continuation of the positions that we added to the budget last year. We're making the commitment one more year, at least, to fund these folks out of fund balance. All right, Bob? Okay, here, again, the same slide. The one addition is the italicized temporary adaptive PE teacher. This was just an oversight on my part. We should have had this included. As we need other folks during the, during this transition period, we're also, we also need to address not just the regular PE, but also the adaptive PE teacher. So that's, this is just another temporary addition. It's a less than one FTE position, and it's being funded out of the federal dollars and is temporary in nature.
Dr. Locker.
Yeah, thanks. I wanted to add that piece. Per the Special Education Staffing Plan, is that correct, Nick? Utilizing those federal dollars to meet the rosters and caseloads before us, correct?
Yes, sir.
Right. So I apologize that that wasn't a part of the last presentation.
Next slide. Oh, thank you, sir. One thing that was in our plan, we just didn't detail it out, and we thought we should detail it for budgetary purposes, is the program fee for the virtual program for high school students. This works out to approximately $2,500 per student per year. So that's that fee. Next slide, please. And with that, that's, those are our updates from the, from the May 5 work session. I'm sure you'll have questions, but the next phase of the presentation is actually to get into approving categorical totals, which is where we are now. But if you have any questions, certainly we'll...
Ms. Pataglia.
Answer this.
Do we have an idea about how many students we're looking at that might be virtual next year from high school?
Not at, not at this time. We don't, we're still working on very preliminary estimates. We built on what, 1% of the high school?
Until we put out an application, we have no idea of what number it's going to be. The range in your presentation was 1% to 5%. And so some counties are at 2, some counties are above 10 at this point. So we'll be somewhere in there, I hope.
Okay. And I know, I mean, you explained it very well last week. Sorry, Mr. Burke. I still would like to see us expand more of our course catalog virtually for students who, you know, take that extra one at night or want to look in the two completers. Is there any way we are going to be looking at that?
That's in the next phase. That's our actual plan. This is a sort of a stopgap to meet the COVID needs.
Just a second. Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Okay. Well, with that, if there are no questions, all the things that we talked about on the 5th and tonight, they all tie to these, these dollars. This is the overall budget. This, this particular screen is split by the non-restricted portion and the restricted portion. And I was hoping I'd be able to read it. So the restricted totals are $355,289,94, and the restricted portion is $48,1,223. If you go to the next slide, please. This just details out the same overall numbers, but it's the, just the revenue portion. You notice that the, we're at $205,617,860. That is the additional $1 million, includes the additional $1 million in one-time funds from the Commissioners. These other dollars are just total for each, each of the items. Total budget, first time in my career here, we're above, we're at $403,307,000. And most of that is the federal dollars, including those federal dollars in the, in the budget. Next slide. Here are the, this is the actual categorical totals that you're approving. So this is, I'll stop on this, this slide. This is what you, this is what goes to the county Commissioners and is included in their budget, the total budget by category.
Mr. Kyler.
Yeah, I just, if you can point out a little bit, I think a lot of people lose track of the percentage of this that actually goes to salaries of employees and classroom activities as opposed, I know people, rightfully so, want to look at all the pennies, but most of the pennies are there. Could you just kind of...
If you, if you look categorically, category 2 is instructional salaries and wages. That's 150 of the 403 million. The other one that's direct education is special education. That's another $48,161. Then you have textbooks and instructional supplies and materials are $13.7 million. Other instructional costs are $3 million. Those are all direct instructional costs. Then you have areas such as student personnel services. They're all of our PPWs and folks that support students. They don't necessarily teach them, but they support students. They're, like I said, PPWs, those types of folks. Student health services are all our nurses and folks there to also support students. Student transportation is how, what it costs to run our bus services. And then you'll see one mid-level administration, all of our principals and assistant principals and so on are in that area. And then this, the, what's left is really the, what folks would consider to be, you know, support costs, administration. It's, it's 6.4 of the 403 million. So it's a little over 1% is administration, which I believe, I haven't looked at it recently, but I believe it, there's no reason why it changed. We were one of the leanest, if not the leanest, in the, in the state as far as that category compared to other, other folks in the state, meaning less of your overall dollars are going to administration versus other instructional items than other, than other jurisdictions. So hopefully, is that kind of what you're looking for?
Okay. Ms. Savigny.
I was just going to say, Mr. Hartlove, the fixed charges category, that's a, that's a big number, and that's, that's benefits, right?
Yes. Good, good point. That is, that, most, and most of those would tie to instructional salaries and wages. It kind of is, is proportional. The largest category is instructional salaries and wages, and then a big part of that 89 million is fringe benefits that support teachers and folks in that category, so...
Dr. Locker.
Thanks. And just a plug for, as, as things return to normal, and next year's going to be a great normal year, if you remember in the past, we've done some citizens' guides to the budget that also address exactly where all those dollars go in easy to kind of understand graphs, and that'll be returning with normal times as well for next year.
Awesome. I'm glad to hear that. That's great. That was, that was very helpful, and I think the community, community really understood that. It was very well done. Okay.
So this, I think you would, I don't know how you want to do the vote, but this is one you would probably want to vote on. I don't know if you want to vote at this point, since they're in front of you.
All right. I do want to make a statement, and as President of the Board, it has been a really tough year with this COVID. Hybrid classrooms, virtual classrooms, quarantines, mask, no mask, two days a week, four days a week, some five days a week, high school sports, extracurricular activities, vaccines, loss of learning, academic struggles, graduation ceremonies, summer recovery. And I'm going to tell you, that's just the tip of the iceberg. You know, it goes on and on. Our custodians and maintenance workers placed PPP, PPE in every school and central office, and then had the tremendous task of deep cleaning every Wednesday, all school facilities. Our caseworkers, they were there. They stepped up to the plate and volunteered to work wherever we needed them. Nurses were in the school. Nurses were doing tracing, contact tracing. Nurses were giving shots for vaccine clinics. Teachers, as well as counselors, speech pathologists, physical therapists, and occupational therapists, just to name a few, were in the front of students and in the classroom or teaching virtually. We must remember that without the administration at each school and the staff in this building particularly, they were covering up to 70 and 80 classes a day. So please, don't say they do not deserve a raise also. They were the backbone of boots on the ground to keep all of our schools open during COVID, and I cannot thank them enough. We could not have done this without all of our employees. They were very hardworking and dedicated through this entire pandemic. I do want to thank the Commissioners for the $6.2 million in additional funds for FY22, but a special thanks for the additional $1 million for FY22 voted on on Tuesday, May 18. Employee compensation is at the top of the list of our priorities. In addition, as the Board President, I urge the Commissioners to reconsider our quarterly meetings. There would have been fewer questions, and they would have understood our needs. They were very beneficial, beneficial and kept the lines open, and thank you. Dr. Locker.
Thank you, Ms. Herbert. At this time, if there are no other Board comments, I think this is the place where we would...
You'd vote for these category totals?
Okay. All right. I need a motion to vote for this category.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Pataglia, seconded by...
I'll second.
Okay. Dr. Dorsey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Next slide, please, Bob. So now we're going to move on to food services, and the food service budget totals, $9,210,000. This is slightly increased over what you saw back in, I guess, February, and that's because we're receiving quite a bit of funding from the federal government to continue free lunches into next year, which is good news for all of our students. We, you know, so, so, but that has increased the overall budget for this area. All dollars are from the federal government, all of the additional dollars. So this is another one where you would just vote, you would vote on?
Right. And also, I don't know if anybody knows this, but these people never stopped working through the whole pandemic. They were out there. They were getting food for all of our children for three times a day, and they are, continue still work. And I know right now, this past week, Dr. Locker and I accept a 24 or 20...
I think it was 27.
$7,000 check, and that was from Martin's.
Martin's Food, yep.
Yes. And they are, right now, again, getting ready for summer, summer recovery, and they are going to continue to do food, help with, you know, feeding our students. So kudos to them also. So now I need a motion. Whoops.
One more question.
Okay, go ahead.
How many years has food services been to the positive? It was, it was a time period where it was a drag on us, but it no longer is.
It's been quite a few, it's been five plus, more than five years. It's, it's been mid, mid last decade since we were at a deficit, and, you know, kudos to the staff there, Ms. Sarno, the, you know, and the Board's been, was very supportive during those times when we had some tight years, and the Board came in and made us whole. So that, that certainly was helpful as well.
Ms. Pataglia.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think it's been phenomenal how our food service stepped up, especially we have several families who have food insecurity issues, and the way that they're making sure the word, get the word out. And it didn't matter what your economic status was, anyone was welcome to it. And I'm glad to see it's going to be carrying over till next year. I know, I did have a request from some high schoolers, they want salads. I'm just, just letting you know.
I think Ms. Sarno hears that quite a bit, you know, it's, so that's something that I think she has on her radar.
But I just want to say, I'm extremely thankful that we, the community donations for the program have been phenomenal, too.
Any other comments? Dr. Dorsey?
Well, I just wanted to acknowledge how younger siblings in the families were also able to get meals through the program. So again, it was just wonderfully coordinated and, I think, very well received in the communities.
Thank you. All right. Now I need a motion to pass the food service budget.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Pataglia, seconded by...
I'll second.
By Dr. Dorsey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. All right, Mr. Hartlove, you're on again.
Next slide, please. So now we have the debt service budget. This is a number that we carry forward from the, from the county. There's a, I think, a very, very small dollar amount change since the budget that you approved back in February. And debt service is just the, the payment of, paying off of prior debt that the county took on in order to fund our buildings. So as, as we build a building, we, the county floats bonds, and then those bonds are paid back over the course of years, and this is, just represents that, those payments on our behalf.
Comments? All right. I will call for the vote for debt services. I can't call for the vote. I need a motion, sorry. Need a motion first. So moved by Ms. Savigny and a seconded by Ms. Pataglia. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. All right, Mr. Hartlove.
And last but not least, we have our CIP budget, and I will not be able to read that, but it basically lists out, it lists out the projects and the source of funding for each project, whether it's local or state. One, when you see the Freedom Elementary School Playground, local really means donations in that case. And then we're showing this because we did get a $25,000 bond from the state to help with the construction there. Those negatives are clearing out of some old, some closed projects, and those dollars went into the middle school replacement project. So that's the funding. Go to the next slide. This is actually the slide that you would approve, and it's just the, shows the revenue sources and then the total expenditures, which total, $45,228,157.
Mr. Kyler.
And, and one of the things that I think has been consistent through this last 14 months we had is the state and county support of the capital projects. And, and a lot of that comes about through communication. Ms. Pataglia and I were lucky enough to be on these last two committees, and there's a lot of conversation before anything's even on paper with the state to try to maximize the state funds we get for all of this, and I appreciate that. I feel badly that three people here haven't said anything tonight, so chime in if I said
Any, Ms. Savigny?
I know, I was just going to say how this also ties back to our pillar four, right? Where we're tracking the facility condition index and how much money we feel that we would need to put in on a regular basis in order to maintain that FCI score going forward. So it's in alignment with the strategic plan, right? This amount of 45 million is consistent with what we've said. We've got, it's the... We've got, it's the slug of money that has to go in every year in order to maintain the FCI. So, I'm glad to see that we're able to maximize the projects or optimize the projects, as you said, Mr. Kyler, and still maintain our FCI.
Any other comments? All right. I need a motion for the approval of the CIP budget.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Pataglia.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Savigny. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It all passes unanimously. And at this time, I thank you very much, Mr. Hartlove, for all your hard work and everybody else's hard work in this room here, and Dr. Locker.
Thank you, Ms. Herbert. Yep, that's on. I just wanted to echo your comments from earlier, now that we've finished approving all those budgets. I'm excited to look forward, and we've, we've been through a lot in the last 14 months, and we've learned a lot, and I know it hasn't been perfect, and I know at times it's been messy, and we kind of knew that going in. But I couldn't be more proud of how our employees, and you referenced all of our employees playing some part to try to do what we can to continue to move our system forward. Yes, we've got work in front of us that continues right now. It continues over the summer. It continues into the fall, but I have no doubt that our employees will continue to rise to the occasion, that our families will continue to support and engage with us, and that Carroll County Public Schools will continue to shine. And so, I just wanted to, I know if I start trying to name everybody, I'll miss somebody, but I think you did a good job of capturing that, and I just wanted to make sure I echoed those comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kyler.
And I want to echo on both of you, and yes, it's been a trying year. I think everybody in this room and all those not in this room, I think all of us have pushed each other at times to get where we were, and Dr. Locker, I want to thank you for your leadership through this. I've often said that you probably shouldn't play poker, and a couple of our conversations, I looked at you and knew you probably shouldn't play poker, but we got through it, so thank you, Sarah.
So true. Yes. All right. Well, I need a motion to adjourn.
I think we have a statement.
Oh, yes. We are going into, we were at recess closed. We are going back into closed with the five board members. Oh, yes.
Yes. When we previously went into closed, it was for the purpose of negotiations and legal advice, so we need to amend that because we're going into closed for the purpose of the personnel.
Okay. I need a motion to amend our agenda.
So moved.
And a second. Okay. Ms. Savigny. Comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Okay. Now, I will go now. We are going to, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By Ms. Savigny.
I'll second.
By Ms. Pataglia. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, and now we will be going into closed, and thank you all so much.
Thank you.